This conference will now be recorded.
Good afternoon. It's Tuesday, May 16th, 2023. This is the regular May meeting of the Davenport Public Library Board of Trustees. We're meeting in Meeting Room B at the main library. My name is Steve Emming, president of the Library Board of Trustees, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is roll call and introduction of attendees. Call for the roll. Malavika?
Yes, Ben.
Sylvia?
Yes, here.
Oh, thank you. Amanda Motto, she was, didn't think she was going to be able to be here, so we'll ask her that. Judy Lance?
Here.
Joe Heinrichs?
Here.
Tom Engelmann?
Here.
Craig Cooper?
Here.
Steve Emming? And Laura Guinness?
Yes.
Is here. Thank you. She's going to say stepped out for a moment. Okay. On the go. So then, as far as introduction of attendees, Lexi Riley, the Assistant Library Director, is joining us. Tracy Moore, Development Officer. Casey Shipley, Recorder. And we're expecting Jeff Collins when he's finished with an appointment. How soon? And, can we go to the meeting? No, okay. And we also have Heidi Lewin, who is the new Friends Board President. Welcome, thank you for coming. And, okay. And, let's see. Council liaison is not here, the present time anyway. So, looking around, I think that's everyone, so we'll continue on the agenda. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. They have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Who's still voting, Steve?
Thank you, Malavika. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom. I have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Okay. Very none, I'll call for the vote. Malavika?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public with comment. Hearing and seeing no one, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is reports and communications. First item there is Friends. Somebody can share with us?
All up right at the beginning.
I can cover up?
No, that's fine, just teasing you, just teasing you. Real quick, a couple of reports that the, we're meeting with the directors at the bookstore to see what we can improve on there and kind of little items we can provide them, the two for all their service that they've done for over the years. Because we do have staff there that is getting a little bit older, so we need to start pulling in some younger people to start working at the bookstore. We started on our RFP to go over our finances, so that committee has been selected, and they will be sending out letters in regards to that. And I guess the other requests for funding have, were all approved, so we're having, Tracy's not here with us, so. So that's what I have to report right now.
Okay. Any questions, Ryan?
Is there training involved with working the bookstore?
Not, not real, not a lot. It's mainly going through, going through the books and putting them on the shelves from, yeah, for sale, and yeah. So, there's not a lot of computer work or anything like that, is what you're referring to?
I'd like to get involved with the fundraiser for the children's
Okay, fantastic.
thing here at the library, but I'd like to, you know, pledge and make payments over time. So, I haven't, I tried looking on the website, did not see that ability to do that.
Okay, we can probably go ahead and do that. We weren't sure as far as timing of when it was actually going to be taking place, we get it when I have, but that is obviously, that's an option.
Okay, alright.
Yep. Yeah, I know it's the same thing in the former one, it was an optional, so you could say your pledge.
Thank you.
Any questions? No? Okay, moving on. Next item on the agenda is commit, under reports and communications is committee reports. First item there is finance.
One thing is, if you look at the budget recap in our packet, we're about eighty-three percent of the way through the year. And our expenditures are running right around that level. So, you know, the budget is working in terms of matching up the timeline. I did want to mention that Finance Committee met and had some discussion about the legislation that passed the Iowa House, or passed the legislature about property taxes, and how that might impact the library. There's still information to be gathered in terms of exactly how this is going to work. The, it appears, at least initially, there will not be, other than the initial problem that the legislature created, or that the folks in Des Moines created by not doing their property, proper thing at the beginning, which kind of affected the budget for this year. But beyond that, the legislature didn't really change it for this year. But next year and going forward, there is some issue with exactly how it will play out. They seem to think they're going to save taxpayers in Iowa a boatload of money. It would appear how that's going to play out is by restricting property tax increases going forward. So, again, there is an issue with exactly how this plays out, how it plays out at the city level. And then, I was going to try to have some conversation with Marion about exactly how the city is going to account for, for example, our levy fund. Because that money was levied because of a referendum of the citizens, which is, in my opinion, is a higher level authority than the city council. And so, because of that, there is a question exactly how that will play out. So, I think I know how that will play out, putting my green eye shield on. That essentially is where we're at right now. Am I paraphrasing everything right, Joe?
Yeah, apparently, when this legislation passed, it was one vote short of unanimous. And apparently, what drove that is the fact that with the assessments being up, they were just, the assessments that were just done, latest ones, with those being up as much as they are, I mean, some people say there's an up like twenty-five percent. And so, with that, legislators were hearing a lot from people about, you know, what that might be with the property taxes. And although I think this, the idea of this legislation is, is not new, but that certainly got it going. As Tom mentioned, in our case, it would take the twenty-seven cent library levy and roll that into the general fund levy, which would then, as far as we know, eliminate the earmark of that, that library levy, it's a twenty-seven cent per thousand assessed valuation. Kind of take earmark off of that and become part of the city general fund. Not, you know, necessarily that it's not going to come to us, but we, we don't know that specifically. It doesn't come earmarked for the library. There's also another library levy, a minimum library levy that stays in place, and that's like six and three-quarters cents. Just for size-wise, the
Steve?
Yes.
This is on the agenda item, this is on the agenda for later for discussion?
This part is, of the agendas for the committee reports. Yes. Okay, so these are the one. Next item is Houston Elton, and men's conference. Greg, are you aware of anything?
I'm not aware of anything really different.
Malavika, advocacy?
Just a few things to share. Thank you, Lexi and Jeff. We are going to share, Central Public Library and the P D R Museum is going to share a table at the Farmer's Market July, August, September, October are the dates, so we have a collaboration, wonderful, that's happening. QC Made, I've not been for that event in a long time, and I went for it recently at W B I game, and it's just fabulous. I did not know what it was, but I got to learn so much from the legendary herb of tricks, am I having his name right?
Yes.
Yes. I mean, it was just fabulous. There were like twelve of us together, so it was quite a huge group, which Bill, her, and I really led us. Another thing, you know, I just saw and I wanted to share with friends, is Quetzalcoatl Community Foundation. I was at an event and I saw that they had something, which they call it the Gilling Catwalk. And they have it now on their website, and they, they introduced it during that event, and now they have it on the website. And I, I don't know whether we, by we, I mean the Friends, I mean, I don't know the qualifications, but there are tons of nonprofits who are on it, and I just thought of sharing. The person to get in touch with, to inquire, there is Melanie Jones at the Quetzalcoatl Community Foundation. And it looked to be just, you know, people would just click and donate, is what I read. So, I don't know the qualification part, but I just thought we shared, so I'm doing this now. Thank you. July seventeenth, which is a Saturday, there is an event by the Waste Commission. And that starts off at Davenport Public Library's Fairmount parking lot.
That is June seventeenth.
June seventeenth, thank you, June seventeenth. And it's on the, it's on the, it's on the east side of Davenport Public Library's, oh yeah, it is June seventeenth. East side of Davenport Public Library's Fairmount Street, if, if anyone would like to join, I'm going to go with the Davenport Public Library. Tisha, and hello, that's my name. And if anyone joins, and we could all go for a brunch maybe, because it's nine thirty to eleven. And lastly, as I entered through the main door at here in the library, just loved the signage. It was absolutely beautiful, so just wanted to share, just, just beautiful, so, thank you. And last, one more. This seems to be a great event, I'm going to go for it this evening, and the person who's presenting it is a past library.
Maybe not we?
So you said that we're sharing the table with the P D R Museum at the Farmer's Market, do we have to pay for that table, or was that an in kind, or a donated?
No, I think we, the Public Library doesn't have to pay for it. So, yeah, it's a free table at
I think as much, I just wanted to clarify this to kind of discuss.
Yeah, no, no, good, good, good to be said. It's, it's free, and it's just a collaboration kind of a thing, you know, we have the passes here, and you know, so both of us, to be, to be in the mess, then they can check it later. But thank you, we have this.
You know, even the other questions? Next item under reports and communications, these directors report, anything you want to amplify, if you can, what you said, I think?
Yeah, thank you, Steve. So, good afternoon. The first thing is an acknowledgement and a thanks to Heidi as a new president for the Friends for this upcoming year. And the first item that we had listed, obviously, was that the Friends did agree to fully pay for the Development Officer position moving forward, which is going to really be beneficial to the library in terms of the loss of funding we had from the E I C C to be able to backfill that position, or that lost money, and that position does almost exclusively Friends work too. So, we're really thankful for them for doing that, and the work that Tracy does to continue to work on fundraising and donor management as well. National Library, we put very well, so thank you for the four members that were able to make it to that event, as well represent us during the proclamation. An acknowledgement about the Genesis Visiting Nurses Association too. This is a really big deal, because we've been trying to develop a process to get a thousand books before kindergarten through those new mothers in some fashion, and Izzy Noble and Emily, and how we're able to do that recently. So, we're very excited to be able to do that. So, they're going to share the literature about that program, and then also to receive a book, so they can start developing their own libraries. We're really excited.
When they came to our house after I had my daughter, she had a book and she had information on a thousand books for kindergarten.
That's fantastic.
That was probably from January.
That's amazing, yay. The Glow trips went really well, those are the grade level outreach experience trips, that's where youth services and outreach staff are able to make it to first graders. And then, we're able to do some story times and a little bit about their school and history, and some really fun things for that. And then, encourage them to come into their local library as well after that, or for the rest of the summer. That's been really great. And then, a couple of other wonderful programs that we've had. We had the latest round of QC Beats, and that is, again, in partnership with a couple of other organizations. The Health and Wellness Fair that we had, and then we also have two months that we're celebrating. This month, Asian American Pacific Island Heritage, and then also Jewish American Heritage Month, so we have a reading challenge for that. We participated with Iowa Battle of Books as well, so a lot of really cool things for that. The ILA Symposium, so that is, it was a leadership symposium that occurred in April. And Brittany Peacock, our Community Outreach and Marketing Supervisor, was on the symposium panel with a number of thought leaders from across the nation. She represented the library, and she's also the president of the Association of Bookmobile and Outreach Services this year. So, she really positively represented the library, and she did a wonderful job with that, which is really cool. And then, we also hosted Davenport Youth Citizens Camp, be on May eighth, and Steve is a dispense this year. And it was really great to be able to have the night for the library, that's the first time we've been able to do that. So, we weren't buying for time with other city departments, we had the whole evening for ourselves, and we still ran out of time to share everything that great library staff does for the community. And then, a couple of upcoming programs, Summary Kickoff is going to be on Saturday, June third, from ten to twelve, it'll be at Fairmount. So, if you're able to make it to that, that would be wonderful. We're going to do Touch a Truck, which is exciting. Pride Month Storytelling Night is on June fourteenth, that'll be for adults, Juneteenth. We have a lot of really great things. We have Civil Rights Commission doing a program on June fifteenth at Fairmount, and then also on June seventeenth, we're going to have a very busy day there with the Juneteenth event at Lincoln Center, Fench Family Fund Days, and the QC Unit, Pride Parade Two, which are all really cool things. And then, one other thing that didn't make it into the report that I wanted to pass on is an update for the Community Center. So, if you can get a status update on what that is. Casey and I were able to attend a pre-construction meeting on Friday at Fairmount. And that was a meeting with city project managers, the architectural firm, which is O P M, and then the construction firm on the contract, which is Precision Builders. At this point, they were initially going to be starting construction in early May, or late May, early June. They're actually going to delay that a little bit now, which is good for us because of Summary Kickoff. But around July first is when they're actually going to launch construction, they're going to start construction on the Community Center. So, once they do start construction, that means there's going to be temporary fencing that's going to be installed on a construction site. They have indicated they will do a dedicated entrance, so they're not going to be coming in library lane or into the parking lot, which is good for us. Minimizes damage, and then also doesn't impact patron access to the, to the library as much, and also a little bit on the noise. So, they're going to have a dedicated entrance off of Fairmount into a fenced-in area. Once they start construction with the pre-grading and the site work, the normal workday is going to be from seven A M. to about three thirty P M. It's a residential zone, so they can only work from seven to seven because of the noise points in the city. The Monument Street sign and the lights are going to be protected during fencing the large rock that has a library-like logo, that will have to be moved. That location is actually going to be retention on their bioswale area. And then, a couple of other cool features about the building, because as you know, it's going to be a multipurpose half-court gym, and then a wall that we're going to be able to project outdoor movies on. There are also plans in the future to install a, an outdoor pickleball court, and then also a playground in that area too. So, really creating much more of a destination space for the community, where we'll essentially have a public library, a community college, a community center, pickleball courts, and a playground, all in that one spot, right next to the path as well. And, oh, timeline on it, they're actually hoping to be done by January, so it's coming along quicker than we had anticipated.
Yeah.
And I'd be happy to answer any questions or concerns.
Jeff, this may not be for us, our view to reply, but just a thought came to my mind. You talked about pickleball courts, and I know this is more of a city question, not for us. But you know, normally tennis courts are converted into pickleball courts, and there's no tennis court in the city of Davenport for kids to play. And the ones that they have at Duck Creek are not usable in the way they are, so people who live here go normally to Bettendorf or Illinois. So, just a thought, if we had the opportunity to talk to the city, because normally it's the tennis court gets transformed into a pickle court, pickleball court. That's how they, that's how they do it.
Sport of the future.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's just sad, it's just a thought, just a thought.
Yeah, I'm not sure if the library will have much sway in that, it's definitely a recommendation to a person to rec.
Of course, yeah. I mean, is it okay if I say?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
You're a resident, I would encourage you to.
And what you mentioned, I saw it on City of Davenport's Facebook page. They shared a few of plan and pictures, architect's renditions, about how this space is going to look, so it was really pretty to, to see it.
Yeah, they look great.
Yeah, thank you.
So again, a comment about the Davenport U program. All the library staff that were involved in that did an excellent job. Just said, ended up running out of time, but maybe a little bit over, still maybe running out. But just want to say that some of the comments that I heard from people, they all seemed to be around the theme of like, oh, I didn't know the library had that. I didn't know the library did that. And as far as the Studio Three Two One, the makerspace, from the comments there, after Leslie Ross was telling about everything that they had to offer, there was one comment, it's like, you know, boys wanted to try one of those, and now I know where one is, but is there a way you can show us how to use it? Oh yeah, we do that too. So anyway, it was, it was really good time, and for about thirteen or fourteen people, a lot, a lot of things that were on the library. Thank everybody for the work they did on that. Okay, next item on the agenda is Council Liaison, and Marion is not here, so we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is old business. The item there for consideration is a motion to approve changes to the circulation policy. I don't think the new circulation policy, okay?
Second.
Okay. Might be a little time, a moment. Got motion in second to approve the changes to the circulation policy, is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Sylvia? Sylvia? We'll come back to Sylvia. Laura?
Uh, yes, hi.
Judy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Craig? Yes, but I just noticed there's something, a word that says no profits. No, instead of non, maybe, business and no profits under borrower eligibility. What else?
So then we need to make a new motion, right, to approve the policy as amended, as recommended by Craig? So, okay, let me, hi, I would like to make motion to make the edit that Craig suggests, and then approve the new policy.
Second. My second, back motion.
So, okay, so, everybody that's, and back to the original, yes, how many yes?
After that change made.
So, so, I guess, so, we basically have an amendment to correct the typo?
Yes.
Okay, so, they are, or, Tom and Laura, are you both okay with the amendment?
Hi.
With that amendment? Okay, so we'll carry on then, so just, I guess, to recognize that, I'll just, I'd like to struggle over if we could. So, Laura?
Yes.
Okay. Judy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Sylvia? Sylvia? Okay, so we got them open. So anyway, go back, my own vote is yes, the motion carries.
I'm on it again, yes.
I did it again, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay, that's okay.
And then your circle run. Okay, so the motion carries. And keep it on.
How come we never are voting in the same order or doing attendance in the same?
Because in that way, there isn't one person who always has to give their vote first, or take their position. Just
I, I thought it was, it was nice to say it, thank you.
That is the routine on City Council, where the vote always rotates.
Good shit, thank you.
Okay, so, next item on the agenda is new business. There, first item there is a motion to approve the selected artists for the interactive art installation as part of the Enhanced Use Spaces Project. So, Tom, you have a second?
So, I seconded it.
Steve, thank you, Malavika. So, I have a motion in second to approve the selected artists for the interactive art installation as part of the Enhanced Use Services Project. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to give you some more background information on this and context. So, what we're talking about is the children's spaces at all three libraries. So, in October of last year, the board had designated funds from the Rochelle Murray Estate request, specifically to the Enhanced Use Spaces Project, and that was done in accordance with the gift acceptance policy. And in March of this year, the library entered into an agreement with the Virgin Group, based out of Phoenix, to provide consulting services for the interactive art installations as part of this project. That initial agreement was not to exceed five thousand dollars for design. We've made significant progress at this point in terms of planning and fundraising efforts, and we're at about seventy-two percent of the project being funded to date. We also have a couple of high-dollar grant requests that are pending. We're hoping to hear from two of those this week. One is a hundred thousand, the other is a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, so pretty substantial amounts still. The public phase of the fundraising campaign is expected to wrap up in June, depending on if we're successful with those grants and a couple of others that are pending. And we are now at a point that we need to report on executing an agreement for the design-build services. So, a little bit of background on this, per policy, expenditures above fifty thousand dollars must be approved by the Library Board of Trustees. And per city finance and city legal, interactive art installations are not governed by purchasing policy, and therefore not subject to the bidding process. So, that's why we have not done an R Q or an R P for this process, because it is essentially considered art. We recommend approving the Virgin Group for interactive art installations as part of this project. They are a design-build firm, and they specialize in creating interactive learning spaces exclusively for public libraries, and specifically focusing on young children, and it's specifically designed for pre-literacy and literacy skills based on every child ready to read, and E C R R is a program that was And ECRR is a program that was built by PLA and ALSC that is essentially based on a couple of core concepts. One is that the reading really begins at birth for a child and then a parent is the child's first teacher. And the Virgin Group takes this a step further and they realize that public libraries are really a child's first classroom for many children. They don't sell their educational interactives to other venues. They're exclusive to public libraries. So you'll never see an installation like this in a pediatric dentist's office or pediatrician's office. You won't see them in children's museums or any other location like that. There are also no complete installations in Iowa. There are a couple of libraries that have one or two small pieces here or there. So Davenport Public Library is the first library in Iowa to have a Virgin installation. In terms of the budgetary impact, again, the project is expected to cost 1.08 million. We are at 72% funding at this time. For the library side of things, it would come to about $304,000 total. We are funding it almost exclusively through grants and private donations and the remainder is going to recover through the friends. There are other expenses associated with this project that would not go through the Virgin Group. So that would be if we're doing the painting, if we need to do the electrical work. There are a couple of other components that we will add in as well that won't be done through the Virgin Group. So there might be some shelving, there might be some seating, some other different aspects. But we're at a point now where we need to start to move forward on this to make sure that everything is moving forward. They're a very busy design build firm. They work with very large contracts and they have limited windows that we can fit in. So it takes about a six month process and we can get two of our libraries done this year if we move forward soon. Then that would be Eastern and Fairmount with Maine coming next year. If we're not able to get this done now, we might have to wait until 2026 because of some of the, some of their workflow issues. And then another background on that, the reason that we have selected, we prioritized Eastern is because Eastern has seen the least amount of updates since that building went into place. Maine saw the renovation and Fairmount, we had $75,000 in the furnishing project last year that went almost exclusively to the children's area. And then also the community in the Fairmount area is going to be receiving the community center as well too. So the priority for us is Eastern and then Fairmount and then Maine for those reasons. So that was a lot of information I just threw at you. I understand if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I presume that all three will be identical designed or will they be a little variation?
They're going to be a little bit variations. It's a good question. They're all going to have the same kind of overall look and consistency and fill, but they will be a little bit unique to each area. So they will all be nature themed and they're going to be nature themed based on the library's ecosystem. So Maine is going to be kind of a riparian setup with a river. We're going to have a prairie kind of fill for Eastern, so there'll be more flowers. And then at Fairmount, it'll be cattails, kind of wetlands kind of filled. So there are, you'll, you'll know that you're in a Davenport Public Library when you see those three areas because they will have the same kind of look and fill, but they will also be a little bit different. And then one of the cool features about this too is there are what they call small interactives that we're going to be able to actually remove and we can then either refurbish those if we need to or we can swap them out. We actually have a circulating process if we wanted to where we could kind of lend them to the different libraries. So we could loan those out between libraries if we wanted to.
You have a question? Concern? Okay, bring them. Call for the phone. So the vote on the motion to approve the selected artists for the interactive art installation as part of the enhanced youth spaces project. Sylvia?
Yes.
Thank you. Laura?
Hi.
Judy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Alavita?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes, motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is discussion of the special library level levy and House File 718. Wow, Steve. Okay, maybe what I might do is just give a little bit of a summary of this. Tom has covered most of this, but just to make sure I don't miss anything as far as what I had marked off here. As I mentioned before, assessments being up is pretty much what, as I understand, you know, led the legislature to being almost unanimous in this, all the one legislator. And so this, it's been kind of complicated because this bill has been in various forms in the House and Senate, different committees, and it ends up as House File 718, which was approved by both houses and approved and signed by the governor. As Tom mentioned, the bill eliminates a number of individual levies. In our case, the library levy, which was voted approved in 2003, there's 16 individual levies that are eliminated. The, eliminated by title, in other words, they don't, they're not in, they've been removed from, from the Iowa code, I guess, the section that included those. But the amount of the levy is still there. And so what would happen, for example, in our case, the, the, you know, the legislation allows cities and counties to take the value of those eliminated levies and add, add them to their general fund levy, which results in what's now called an adjusted, adjusted city general fund levy. And so the base levy for city is $8.10. So in our case, just as an example, you took that plus the 27 cent library levy, you'd have a levy of $8.37. And so that's, I guess, where you would start. But then there are adjustments to the property tax levies because, and they would compare two years. So for example, you would take, let me see where is this? The baseline adjusted city general fund levy year is fiscal year 2024, which starts in July. It's 13, FY, is that what you're?
FY '24 would be July 1st.
First of July 1st.
Oh, 2023.
23, 24.
Yeah.
So that would be the baseline year. And so that would be the, the first then adjusted city general fund levy adjustment will be for fiscal year '25 budget. And then, so what will happen is they'll take that fiscal year '25 budget or levy amount and, not levy amount, but valuation, and they'll compare that with the fiscal year '24 and they'll compute what the increase or what the growth in that was. And so then if, if the growth is, if the overall taxable value of the city or county in the current year compared to the previous year is greater than 3%, but less than 6%, then their allowable growth is adjusted to 2%. So they would allow a 2% increase in the taxable value. If the allowable growth is greater than 6%, then their allowable growth is adjusted to 3%. So 3% is the most it can increase. So I guess we don't know at this point what that's going to be and what that will do to the overall city tax levy. But, but, well, there was a tool of the League of Cities put out, but it was based on an early version. But on that, it shows that Davenport, if fiscal year '23 was the start or if that was already in place, would have the impact of about $2.6 to $2.7 million decrease. And so I don't know what any changes might have done to that, but that was not a good sign. So this adjustment, 2%, 3%, whatever comes up, that would reduce the city levy, but it's unknown what's going to get adjusted. I mean, it's the overall city levy, but our 27 cents is in there. So does it all get reduced pro rata? The only information I would ever get on that is it's, it's, it's up to the city budget process. So that's, I guess, that maybe is our main concern right there is not knowing how that might slide. Currently, the fiscal 20, fiscal year '23 levy amounts, the 27 cent library's levy brings in just over $1.3 million. And it is minimum levy, the 6.34% which remains in place is $336,000. And so that's how much is out there in total. You know, how that's going to be impacted by these various things is unknown. The, the adjustment process, the 2% to 3% adjustment, that sunsets in fiscal '28 or '29. So that has a four year sunset on it. But the changes as far as the elimination of the individual levy from that, that's, that's, so it's interesting. I need to go back and look at it, but I did read someplace where I thought it said that we could still, we could still have a referendum for a city approved levy, voter approved levy, which is an interesting concept when people are, if one is, well, yeah, I guess you could do it again, but on the other hand, kind of goes back to what Tom said, just seems really bad form to take something that the voters approved and say, okay, well, get rid of that. That's pretty much what happened. What I've probably explained here is based on information I got from the lobbyists for the Iowa Library Association and that, I assume you get those emails, that was given out of that information and also from the Iowa League of Cities. They've done that summary of it also, but you know, they cautioned that, you know, there's still a lot of goofy parts and even though it's been signed in the law, it's still going to see how it actually plays out. So they say, keep checking there.
It, it, it is interesting that the max increase in valuation now is going to be 3%. That's interesting because if you look at the inflation rate, it's like 6%. And like 80% of the city's budget is personnel. So all the pressure is going to be on the union negotiations in terms of how that percentage fits into the 3% cap and whether, whether we're at 3% in a given year or whether it's It is what the legislature does.
These things happen, these things happen going forward?
Just one other thing to tack on is we will be monitoring this moving forward, obviously, working closely in library and the finance committee. And the budget process is going to start in September coming up for the next fiscal year. So we'll have more information later in the fall, as we receive it and we'll move forward there. We're confident that everything's going to work out just fine and we'll keep moving forward.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Any questions or concerns?
I saw some calculator online about what you just said, like we have each city within the state and I, I would have to revisit and try and get the standard.
Yeah, and that was, I said, that was based on a previous version.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm losing my connection.
Our next, Sylvia?
I think she said she was losing her connection.
Oh.
Yeah, she said.
Okay.
Oh, by the way, could we open? I'll leave nothing to.
Oh. What?
It's for me and for Laura.
Next item on the agenda is, she needs comments. Amanda asked me to pass this along. It's in regard to the reading challenge. And so this is, this is a library story. She said, I see on the agenda, there will be a presentation about the reading challenges and I wanted to share something. Last week, I picked up my son from school at Eisenhower where he's in, where he's in first grade. One day, one day, and he was absolutely beside himself of excitement. He was shaking a bathwater in my face and talking so rapidly I am asking him to slow down. He told me that people had come from the Davenport Public Library to talk to his class and there was a big reading challenge that he just had to be part of. While he was enthusiastic about all the possible prizes, he kept repeating that there was a staycation at a hotel on the line and he needed to do everything to win it. He asked me about 10 times when we could go to the library next. I was so happy and appreciative to the staff who came out and got the kid who was so excited about reading in the library. Thank you, Brittany and crew, I'm sure.
Love the staycation. I have to do it.
It was on the line.
We're kids, we just got a little ribbons. There's only one staycation.
I swear.
Anyway, I believe that's all I have. I guess next we'll turn it over to Lexi or who's got the summer reading challenge?
It sounds great. And Casey's got some slides that she's going to pull up and share. Oh, I think you have to click this, this screen right there down below where it says Sylvia, if you click on that screen, now click share. Now people will see why it's just given. Thank you. Okay, so today I'm going to share a little bit about some of our library reading challenges for summer reading program. It's our biggest one of those, but we do a lot more all throughout the year too. So first thing I want to talk about is our reading challenge team. So this is one of our newest teams at the library. It was established just earlier this year, actually, and it's a cross departmental team of different library staff. Our youth services supervisor, Emily Sim-Pow, leads that team, which also includes two youth services staff, two customer services staff, two information services staff, one special collection staff and one community outreach staff. So that way we're getting different perspectives, different ideas. So that way we're getting different perspectives, different ideas for how to promote the reading challenges, perspective from people at the desk versus working behind the scenes. And so they work together to plan those reading challenges. Right now they're just starting, so they're doing some training on the Beanstack software. They're picking out the badges for summer reading program this year, brainstorming new ways to promote our reading challenges to our patrons, and planning a fun challenge for our staff just to get everyone on board in Beanstack. So that's what they're working on right now. They're going to continue to plan things throughout the year. It's really exciting to get a variety of perspectives and planning these. So of course, like I said, our big one is the summer reading program. So there are, within that separate challenges, for babies and toddlers, one for kids, one for teens, and one for adults with prizes for every age group. We're of course doing this to try to prevent that summer slide so that when kids are out of school for the summer, they're not just forgetting everything they learned. They're still practicing their reading skills and learning in a variety of ways. So there are different opportunities for them to participate and get entries into the prize drawing, not just by reading, but also by going to library programs, by trying out different databases and other services that we have. We're really trying to engage different learning styles. So there are even just some fun opportunities in there. Like I think in the kids one, one of them is look at the clouds and see what shapes you can find. So just really reinforcing that imaginative play is an important part of early literacy and learning.
Is there a reason why Wilson's not part of that? They didn't make it in the top.
That's just the top ones. So that is actually, that's a slide from last summer. As we were tracking throughout the summer, the schools had the highest percentage of participation in the summer reading program. So we always do trophies at the end of summer. One for the public school with the highest participation percentage and one for private elementary. So we post all throughout the summer, so like every week we'll give updates and it kind of boosts participation because kids see that, oh no, my school's not listed. I better get my reading going. So that's been a really fun aspect of it. And this last year, Haze One, they had 36% participation. And Trinity Luther and one for private schools, so it's 21%. So both of those schools got to go to the city council meeting and get their trophy and they got $1,000 in new books for their school library. So it's a really good incentive for them to participate.
Those were new winners.
What's that?
Those were not the typical winners. Those were both schools that hadn't recently been.
For a long time, it was the same school winning every year, but at some point in the last like five years or so, it started changing every year. So I think this might have been the first time that Haze One in a long time. That's always nice to see. And I think it gives the kids a little bit more boost to try their hardest because they don't see, oh, it's always that school. They know they have a good chance every year. So all of the participants are encouraged to track their reading and other activities using the Beanstack app. We do have paper logs available though for anyone who doesn't have access to devices or just really wants something to color on or put stickers on to. Previously, we just did the summer reading program from June through July, but starting last year, we extended it throughout the end of August because that way we could give the reading logs to students both before school got out for the summer and pick them up from the kids when school got back in session after summer. Because it just really helped kids who had transportation barriers participate for the summer. So they could still print their log at the end and get their prizes. So that really helped. We actually saw, I believe it was a 61% increase in participation this year over the previous year. So we did have over 2,000 participants join us and so we're looking to increase that even more this year. So this year, like Jeff mentioned earlier, our kickoff for summer reading will be Saturday, June 3rd. It'll be held from 10:00 AM until noon over at Fairmount. And this year, our kickoff is going to be our touch a truck event. So if you come to that event, you'll see fire truck, police cars, different cars from Public Works. We will have a World War II Jeep. We'll have something from WQAB called the Beast. I don't know what that is, but I'm very interested. Our owl will be there. What's that?
The weather truck.
Ooh, okay.
Storm chasers.
And the beast.
Cool.
I think we have a new name for our, for the owl.
Yeah. And speaking of. And speaking of, the owl will be there and then the Kona ice truck will be there as well. I believe the Kona ice truck is selling, you know, snow cones as a fundraiser for the teen advisory board. They did last time. So our theme this year for summer reading is Find Your Voice. So there's going to be lots of programs centralized around that theme, around music and other fun activities for kids. And then of course, like I was saying, we don't just do reading challenges and reading programs in the summer. We do things all year round now. So in the winter, we hold our winter reading program. It's a much more relaxed, lower stakes thing than summer. It usually just goes for the month of January. It's one all ages challenge using like a bingo card with different activities. So some of the same things you might do in the summer reading program, just in a shorter duration. So that again can be done in the Beanstack app or on a paper reading log. Last year, our winter reading program had 313 participants and based on our overall participation and our population size and engagement we have for it on social media, we won a prize from Beanstack for doing a great job. So our staff did a super job putting together this year's winter reading. And you can see there's some of the prizes that we have. We should try to put together some prize baskets with a variety of items. The adult one is some nice cozy things for winter and then fun things for the kids. I believe the little crab is like a speaker for your cell phone that the teams were very interested in. And then we also have a variety of Beanstack exclusive challenges. So these ones were just made by Beanstack. We don't have a paper log for them. They are just something you can do in the app. It's super easy for our staff because all we have to do is like click a button in there and then our patrons can participate. And so these are really nice for encouraging our patrons to read diverse materials because a lot of them are during, you know, specific months such as the challenge we had for Black History Month, Hispanic Heritage Month, Native American Heritage Month. And this month, we have one going on for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. So I encourage just patrons to read books by authors from those communities. And then the prizes you can see here are usually like book bundles featuring own voices titles, so written by authors who are from those communities. So we have really good participation from those. And again, that's something that usually happens every month or so. So it really keeps our patrons engaged in Beanstack and reading all year long. And then of course, I had to mention A Thousand Books Before Kindergarten, which I know you know a lot about. And you can see in the picture there on the left, one of the billboards that we recently got up at Davenport. I believe that is the one on Harrison, just by Central High School. And we've also got one on Fourth and Division, I think. We had one on 53rd for a little while too. So they've been really popular and noticed a lot and gotten a lot of people excited for the program. So of course, this is a self-paced program for children from birth to when they begin kindergarten because we know how important early access to books and words is for early literacy and development. So research shows that sharing books, conversations, and songs with young children builds their language skills. So we want to help assure that they become lifelong lovers of books. So participants in this program get prizes after reading 100, 250, 500, and 750 books and then finally, of course, 1,000. Some of those prizes include a tote bag, a storytime kit, a T-shirt, a book plate, a picture on a bulletin board, and a book to keep. So we currently have 1,322 kids sign up for this program and those kids have logged over 200,000 books to date. So participation is going up. We're really excited about this partnership with Genesis and Conic. So that's what I have for you today. Are there any questions?
Yeah, we have participated in the family of the reading programs. And as you said, it's always been the for too long. But they come and put in stickers and coloring and everything. It's been solid fun, especially going behind Eastern and, you know, sitting on the one of the little benches out there and reading. And you know, when you were sharing all this, I feel how time has flown for me along with my child. So thank you for working with us. Now I continue as an adult.
And I totally hope is that kids are participating, but they're getting their parents to participate as well.
Thank you.
One other thing to accentuate too, that Lexa had mentioned that we extended the timeframe that you can participate in summer reading from June 1st to August 31st. And I want to reemphasize the importance of that because what it did is it made the program more accessible and inclusive for participants that had barriers for transportation to be able to come to their library and participate. So it increased that participation rate and it has a big effect and a big impact on staff too because that's a lot more work that we have to do during that timeframe. Instead of only doing it for one month or even for two months, they're doing it for 90 days ahead of the year. So I just want to emphasize the great work that all library employees do in terms of these programs to help support the community. Because it is not just easy to, oh, we extended the timeframe. It's that much more work that they have to do and they do a wonderful job with that.
Questions, comments? Any questions? Next item on the agenda is adjournment. Will adjourn sound? Oh, Alavita, thank you. Save us there. All the great words of adjournment, we say goodbye, we say aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you. Motion carried. Thank you, everyone, for your time.